All right, we call the meeting to the order. Thank God you folks have been here tonight. I appreciate it. Hopefully we move forward and do some good business tonight. First our business is the indication. If you would please bow your head. Our heavenly Father, we come before you once again to conduct the business of this county. We thank you for the privilege of serving the citizens of this county and we appreciate those who are here to listen to us, to liberate and ask questions. Oh Lord, we thank you so much for the value of thy nature, for the beautiful day, for the souls who protect us, and for those who have sacrificed for us. We ask, oh Lord, that you bless the citizens of this county, keep them safe, and help us to do good work on their behalf. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
If you would often rise and be licensed, please pledge with me.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is the minutes filed as very concession made in the nineteenth motion.
I have a concern in the way the year last paragraf in section five of your old business, it's describing the survey that we accrued as to be in the cemetery. And this to me reads a little broader than I understood. I thought it was going to be that portion of 5.0 within the tract that's bounded on the east and north by the city, on the west by the Hamilton Cemetery Association, and then on the south there are several homes that are shown, whereas the minutes are showing that it's from Barnesville to 116, and I think that's over in the front.
Yeah, I see. Uh, we were told that it's only going to be five acres.
Right. And that's what I was trying to describe, and I have the aerial photos and more look at that.
Change the minutes to select minutes.
I've just been trying to get some specificity where the surveyors as well, so that will help.
Five plus or minus acres.
Immediately lying, immediately behind the current Hamilton Cemetery in the vicinity.
Right, and bounded by the city on the west and north, and then by the homes that are located in the north.
That's where it's supposed to be.
Have that changed? Any other corrections, additions?
Motion that we accept this collective.
Motion to accept this collective, and a second. Any other discussion? Favor see if I raise your hand. Motion carries. Commissioner Mabry, by the way, is on vacation with his family, even. Appearance of citizens. David Taylor, Washington Road.
David Taylor, 964 Washington Road. First of all, I want to thank you. We feel like we're getting somewhere with right now. And we've had everybody on that road diligently working to achieve this goal. And all I'm here to say is, are we still on track with what we talked about the last two weeks? I don't have the minutes with me. And is there any glitches or anything that we got in engineering? Where do we stand at this point as of two weeks ago?
Well, and I, by the way, let me ask commissioners tonight. I've had several folks mention that you're having trouble hearing, so commissioners, if you would please pull your microphones closer when you're speaking. People at the front table, if you would please do the same. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Taylor, you will note that on the agenda tonight, I have requests to go ahead and contract with the engineer to get this process rolling as far as some of that. The end torch Johnson Mill Road, where those real steep banks are.
Right.
We're gonna need definitely some engineering work there. I've talked to Georgia Power, and they take ninety to one hundred and twenty days to get the job done, so we need to get to them immediately. They've also requested a fifteen-foot easement behind the power poles, but I think the way to overcome that is since we do have a sixty-foot right-of-way, we use forty-five foot of the right-of-way, put the power poles to keep people in the property, I think we can solve that. I would suggest if you have, we're going to look at, starting some tree clearing here shortly, because that saves us money with Georgia Power. And if you could advise the neighborhood that if you have any trees between the survey line and the street that you want to keep for firewood or, you know, settlemental reasons, cut them down now and get to them, because we're going to get to them hopefully in the next sixty days.
Hard to have a next?
I'll try. I'll say sixty days, so I don't, when it takes three weeks, then you'll be happy, so. Pending the board's recommendation, we're gonna get moving on some of the other stuff. And I think what we'll do is, I'm gonna recommend to the board is that we use EMC engineers, because they've done all the survey work, they've already got everything laid out, and it's gonna be a lot quicker to get it done that way rather than try and procure another firm. So, we want to expect, the main thing, and the only thing, real concern I have, is getting that whole plan into Georgia Power and getting on their list, because they're such a group of bureaucracy. We had the experience with AT&amp;T in Kings Gap, which has held up the project now for months, because they haven't moved their lines, so we're gonna make sure we learn from that experience and don't let it happen on your road.
So, we're already getting in with Georgia Power?
Yep.
And then talking to them?
Yes.
Now, uh, and then don't take this the wrong way, please, but we've been pushing this for a long time, and we don't want to see it slip through the cracks again. You know what I mean?
And what we need to do, and the commission will have to discuss that themselves, is there's just the one landowner right now that has not come to terms with this.
I did have a talk with him, and he indicated he thought it would be paid, you know, but I'm letting y'all deal with that. I'm not getting into that.
And we are.
Okay. And I just want to make sure that doesn't hold us up either, please.
That one, we will be moving ahead with that.
We have done everything, and we've tried to do our due diligence with getting the lander signed, getting everything done. We don't want to come November and you say it's too cold to pay. That's what I'm getting at. I don't care if it's September. I mean, I really don't, but I'd like to see it done this year.
Would we too?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I mean, can I get your word that that might be done this year?
Yes, sir.
You go give me your word now.
Yes, sir. I tell you, we're moving ahead just as fast as we can move ahead on that.
And we're gonna have to pave road by September, October. October. What? October, I'm not gonna.
Maybe Santa Claus will come down.
He won't be able to make it on that road until that day. But, we really would love to see this done. And I know I'm a pain in y'all's backside, and I'm not trying to be, I'm just trying to have something done.
Mr. Taylor, you're not paying, we appreciate it. But certainly, and don't feel like you have to wait for our commission meetings, if you've got questions in, and I would suggest, I know you're talking with Ms. Channing and the county manager Wood, and please feel free to call her just in no case.
But I don't have a lot of questions, I just want a road. You know what I mean?
And we do too, sir. We do too.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Next, old business, computers with sheriff's vehicles.
Mr. Chairman, I believe the big issue towards Commissioner Channing's issues with some of the use of the funds and how they could be spent, and I believe the sheriff has demonstrated to you that that would be in line with that?
Yes.
Those funds are very restrictive, and you kinda gotta think out of the box how to expend them, because we don't have a drug court, nor do I support one for the county. So, you have to kinda think out of the box on how to expend it. So, even before we went into buying the computers, I talked to our county attorney, talked with our chairman, talked with the county manager, and I drafted a letter and explained it. I thought I had to hack off Mayakopa, go ahead with it, or else I wouldn't have done it. And I think I explained it to Ms. Channing on the training use of the computers, or what we want to do with it outside the box. Not the primary use, but it is a use, and it's authorized. So, therefore, hopefully y'all write that check and pay my benefit.
It should already be paid.
Check should have already been written.
We paid it, yeah. They were gonna come and put you in your own account.
We just haven't put it in an account yet.
Okay. And hopefully we can write a check out of that account and put it back in general funds.
And from what I understand, you should save some funds, some money in the training side, because a lot of the officers will probably have to be going to Forsyth.
Absolutely, and maybe train, save some funds in 911 on the way they work out. I can't guarantee them where all that goes, but it's no wall of savings to the county, absolutely. And I think y'all have some questions about a true county transitional person that went astray that I'm able to answer.
Let me, for Mr. Taylor, are you okay with that, so?
I suppose so, yeah. I do really.
We talked about it five, six, four, five, one, anyway, I think, everywhere we talked about it.
I thought we wanted to have it on the agenda for next week, excuse me, next meeting in order to, the Pine Mountain Chain was very interested, excuse me, Pine Mountain Valley Chain was interested, and we're giving them a chance to be here. And if there are any questions, just not to jump the gun for them, but they were concerned, and I understand from you, point is that, but I think they want, they need reassurance and deserve to be comfortable with that they are being well protected and notified as timely as possible, and to try to help prevent the situations best we can.
He left on, I say left, he didn't get on the bus and go back, worked the, he worked with the poultry plant eleven months, and one day he decided not to go back to True County where he was living and seeing the hotel transitional center, and we got notified three days later.
And I think that's the issue, and we're trying to solve.
And even when we're notified, they didn't want to do a warrant. We can't go on private property to look for someone without a warrant.
But I think the thing we can capitalize on is, we did, y'all did everything right, but the opportunity to let folks know about Code Red and make sure that everybody that can be signed up for Code Red is signed up, because once you found out, Code Red hit the.
Not right away, but that was my determination. We found out about it Monday, forced the issue to get a warrant, along with the US Marshals, who told border corrections or corrections people the same thing, look, we can't help y'all people get a warrant. So, they did finally get a warrant Monday afternoon. At that point, we went out with our staff, the dogs, started searching, dark came on, we stopped. First thing Tuesday morning, we called Red, did the call down, made notifications to the television centers and all that. I didn't call Code Red Monday night on the phone, because I wasn't gonna cause a panic.
Yeah, but the thing that I'm emphasizing is, everybody needs to be signed up for Code Red, because we can target specific areas of specific messages.
That's probably true.
I'm just gonna ask if you would mind coming back next meeting and addressing whatever issues and discussions with True County, and so that they won't let this happen to our county.
I promise y'all be here the sixth day.
I appreciate it.
I promise you.
Thank you.
Chair, I have one question. Is he in custody now?
He is not in custody.
Okay.
I doubt very seriously he is anywhere near us. But, I mean, he was working at the plant eleven months before he decided not to go back to the transition center. And they've had that program in place since the new plant, and they probably got about forty other people in the same position. I'll leave him at that sixth day.
All right. Thank you.
I think I'm on here again later.
We need a motion today.
Yeah, yeah, we do need a motion for, if you would, then your count.
I'll make the motion.
To, against what's your count?
Drug abuse treatment funds.
Drug abuse treatment. I'll say.
Motion and second discussion. Favors, if I raise my hand. Motion carries. All right, any other old business? All right, new business?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I do have one item of old business. I wonder when we're going to have our SPOSS update. I know we have an item on the agenda tonight, and it says you have to fund something through SPOSS, 2004, 2009.
Paul and I had that discussion today. That is, the reason you don't have it yet is the DCA has a financial report that they require to get us, get every year, which, because of the delay in the audit, that is delayed. That holds up our eligibility for grant funds, so since we got seventy thousand plus dollars sitting out there, grant funds that are being killed because of it, that's number one. Number two is the SPOSS.
Mr. Taylor, you were gonna do some checking on that too, to see?
Yeah, I got wrote and sent your bio, or sent somebody your bio memo on the 2009, 98 SPOSS.
Right, okay. All right.
Speaking of old SPOSS funds now, y'all, I was asked, turn in a form for old SPOSS funds to see if it could be recruited, and I have a copy of that, I'll be glad to give y'all, that we expended out of drug money that y'all are gonna try to get back. It was a tune of one hundred seventy-nine thousand, five hundred eighty-five dollars and one cent.
Remember that with, uh?
Remember that?
He just sets, yeah.
I don't set, I'll give them a budget, man.
Never seen it.
I know, I'm sure, but, and if it's a way you can use old SPOSS money.
We certainly could love that.
But it was cap gains property that goes to the county.
Good, yeah, give it a call. Take a look at that.
Would be glad to get that money back.
Greg, would you say that by our next meeting, then we ought to at least have some of those SPOSS dealt with? I think so. Be ready to report.
Okay, I'll go same.
All right, good. All right, any other old business? And new business, first item is financial statement for April 2015, which you were given previously to review. Followed with, our new finance officer is here, so if we have any questions, please feel free to ask them now. If there are no questions, entertain a motion.
Make a motion that would approve.
Motion to approve, we have a second. Question?
I have a question.
Okay. Well, I'll second it, so we get to question.
Okay. This is probably before your time, Mr. Blake, but Department Eight had a question.
How that's called?
On the travel and the school. Why so much?
I can explain that. That was under David McCall, he was paying his EMTs to upgrade, he was paying for the school for them to upgrade to paramedics, and I was holding off paying them until we decided a policy on it. So, we paid the three last paramedics that were under David's directorship for upgrading to, from EMT to paramedic, and then we cut it off, so there will be.
Okay, did we not need to do some budget amendments?
Yes, we will.
And I have one other question, which you, you mentioned when you gave us this, but under the Department 32, which is recreation.
Seven hundred thousand.
The seven hundred thousand, that was in there as an expense, and we discussed that.
That was the money to purchase the Ellis Park, and it got carried forward. I don't think it should be in this year.
No, it shouldn't be in there. It was in the January one, so I put it in there, but I didn't notice, but it's just the budget for it.
Okay, is there any way to get a corrected copy?
Oh, yeah.
With this? Can we get, can I table this until we get a corrected copy? The seven hundred thousand, the Ellis Park.
All right. Department 32.
All right.
Table the next meeting. Next is, uh, if we get, I'm gonna skip the next item, because that would get into discussion. We've got a public hearing that will start in a little bit, but let's jump down to the next item, bid award on the taxiway relocation.
I just buried it. We received five bids Thursday for the taxiway relocation. They range from about 2.7 million to, right, 3.4 million or 3.5 million, and they put the stamp right over where the number is. But the low bidder was Alexander out of Fortson for a bid amount of $2,771,753.80. They definitely sharpened their pencil on that one. EBK Dixon is still our airport consultant, they reviewed it, found everything in line, and recommended that the award be made to Alexander. And needs board commission action to ratify that.
All right. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve the bid and make a determination in Alexander contracting, Fortson, Georgia, be the winning bidder.
All right, we got a motion and a second discussion. That, just again, for ratification purposes, this, we had been told for a couple, three years now, that it was gonna, we were gonna have to do that relocation of the taxiway over a three-year period of time and do it thirds. All of a sudden, DOT and FAA came up with some money and said, no, we want to do it all at once, so we tried to jump through some hoops and get this done. I believe it's now being reviewed by GDOT or FAA, just.
They're supposed to forward a copy to the GDOT, yes.
And so, as soon as that, that's done, we can get working, working on that thing, get it all done at once. It's, you know, from time to time, the laws change and regulations change, and we have to relocate the taxiway, move it further away from the existing runway, so that's what's being done. Most of this will be paid out of government, federal and state money, so.
That's so when we get all those big jets in there, they all pit wingtips when they try, you tell.
That's right. We, uh, we will, I think Harris County only has to cover about five percent of this money. The rest of it is paid for by the state and the federal government. So, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor of awarding the contract to Alexander? Do you think I already made it? Motion carries. All right.
Want to jump my out?
Yeah, why don't we move ahead to that, Greg?
Since we have the sheriff here, that would be a good, good timing. As we've moved forward with deciding what's gonna go in Ellis Park, one of the issues that we wanted to address was, one, to have a trailhead so people could ride bicycles and have a egress, egress from that north corner of the park. We also had a concern about security. We had talked to the sheriff originally about placing a precinct within, in the park, but he said that he felt that it's a much greater deterrent to have it visible, so that's why we ended up with the placement of it on the corner of 85 and 315. What we proposed is to do a design build, which basically we give specifications to a company that can both design it and build it all in one package, because it's such a small building, it's a whole lot more practical and a whole lot more cost-effective, and there are contractors that can do that in this county. So, what I'm requesting now is permission. It will be a twenty by twenty-four building with two twelve-foot offices in it, twelve by twelve offices for deputies. It will have a restroom inside and storage for the deputies, but it'll also have a restroom at least outside for a trailhead. We'll have a little pavilion there that we can have a couple picnic tables in, and we also have some bike racks and some parking. We anticipate having security cameras probably on at least all four corners of the building, which I'll coordinate before we give the designs back to the sheriff. And so, this is one of the first visible signs of progress on the park, so that people will see and be able to use that small, lower the leg fairly quickly. It's a nice little hike down there, and we know there's brim in there to take the kids fishing and stuff like that, so this will be our first visible sign, and there should be some working on a lodge before too long, so we should have these projects come online before the end of the summer, so some folks will start being able to get in there and enjoy that.
Good. Thank you, Greg. Do I have a motion? And this is not to go ahead and build it, but at least go ahead with the.
Design build.
Design build contract. It would be brought back.
Do we have any idea of the approximate cost?
Under a hundred, no. But that includes, you know, a slab, parking.
Septuple.
Yes, seven and a half.
I'll move, we proceed with obtaining plans, and you.
All right, motion, do I have a second? Questions, discussion?
I assume so. Sure. Will this have any effect on the funding?
No, ma'am.
All right, all in favor of the motion, please think I already raised my hand. Joey said it's proxy, so. Okay, motion carries. Couple minutes, so you don't need all the minutes for Washington Road Engineering, or not?
It depends on how.
Let's go ahead and start that.
So, this, this road's a little trickier than paving, and it is some of the dirt roads that we're gonna have to pave. It has some fairly steep slopes, it has some curves, and it has some angles that need to be revised for vision, visibility. So, and also, Georgia Power needs a whole movement plan, so. I've talked to EMC, they can, they can get this done for probably the quickest, because they've already done the, all the, all the survey work, they've already done the road layout, so it would be logical to go ahead and go with them. I have got a price quoted of thirty-five thousand to do the engineering, not including inspection.
Okay, and all of that will come out of the SPOSS funds?
Correct.
And they will get started on that engineering right away?
Well, technically, they're already started.
I understand that. Continuation?
Yes.
Okay. All, entertain a motion?
I'll sub move. I'll second.
Motion and a second discussion. All in favor of the motion, think I already raised my hand? Motion carries. All right. We will now go into a public, a public hearing. This is a public hearing for a special use permit, and procedures will be as follows. Call up the meeting to order, I'll read the application. The applicant or his or her representative will then come forward and make their presentation. Advocate completed their invitation. Any who wish to speak in favor of that application will be invited to come forward. When they have completed their comments, any who are in opposition, we allow their time at the podium, and when that is complete, then the applicant will have the ability, the right to make any closing comments, make any rebuttal comments that are needed. At that point in time, commissioners will ask questions, and then close the public hearing and entertain a motion. We passed over our conflict of interest statement. I'll call this public hearing to order. This is an application for a special use permit for an agricultural horse facility at 6350 Georgia Highway 219, Fortson, in land lots 15 and 28. at 6350 Georgia Highway 219, Fortson, in Landlots 15 and 28, Land District 17, Mount 017, Parcel 008B. It's 15.32 acres. The use is permitted in A1, C1, and C4, and this property is currently zone A1, so it qualifies. It's a special use matrix number 17 for auditory arenas, auctions, equine boarding, and stable facilities and exhibit halls with the proper off-street parking. The planning commission has recommended for approval for this. Staff has recommended approval. It is the application of Samuel M. Rhodes at 6388 Georgia Highway 219, Fortson, Georgia. And Mr. Rhodes, Sergeant Major, I will ask you to come forward and make whatever comments you wish to make at this point in time.
Good evening. Do I need to do anything formally?
State your name and address.
Okay, I'm Samuel M. Rhodes. I reside at 6388 Georgia Highway 219 and also on the front view as part of Warrior Outreach, 6350 Georgia Highway 219. We currently do the equine mounted and dismounted activities at the 6388 Georgia Highway 219 address, and our goal is to expand the program and continue to, and use 6350 to make it more durable. We've got some really great trails over there, and we're all for that purpose. To be perfectly honest, since we started Warrior Outreach in 2008, the program has grown immensely. Just by this flyer, I can give it to you at any time. The support for the program has grown throughout the county as well as the state of Georgia and Alabama, as you can see by some of the folks sitting in the audience from different organizations. Last year in 2014, this is what we did with our program based in Harris County. We took 7,831 veterans, soldiers, and their family, and also supported Club and Stream Center to feed, help feed the homeless in knee up Columbus, Georgia. And, you know, it disguises what we expect out of ourselves as, as a veteran, myself and my family, Kathy. You know, it's remarkable what one organization can do to help so many, and we want to continue that.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate what you do for us. Thank you. If folks have not had the opportunity, go by and take a look at that, it's a twice facility. I'm sure Sergeant Major would be happy to show you around.
I'd like to show the shovel, how to remove someone.
Okay.
Normally, I'd be concerned when a military policeman walked in the room of Sergeant Major up here, but I think in this case it's...
I think we're all right.
We have a number of folks, I don't know if I can call them by specialty, my responsibility or how you want to do that, but I have a number of folks who have to speak on behalf of the program.
We, I assume they will speak in favor of it and then...
Yeah, but some are important. Yeah, they're all that matter.
Okay. That's fine. If you want to introduce someone, we will now move into the portion where any citizens who wish to speak in favor of this or in support of this application will be given the opportunity to speak, and if you introduce one or two to start it off.
I'd like to start with Linda, who can come up. She's with the Dollars of the American Revolution, you know, her to speak and all the...
All right. Thank you, sir. And anyone who does come up forward to speak, just please state your name and your address, and then you can make your comments. Whichever suits you best. Probably can use a better sitting with a microphone.
Hi, I'm Linda Aings. I live in Columbus, Georgia, and I'm with the George Walton chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution. Sam came and spoke to us back in May and told us about the Outreach Center, and I was just fascinated by it. But I'm representative for the chapter in Columbus, and we would like to say how much we appreciate what he has been doing for the veterans. I'm a daughter of a veteran, married to a veteran at one point, and just watching the news and seeing things that have happened, we just really need the support that he's giving, and I applaud him, and we in the chapter applaud him and thank him for what he's been doing.
Thanks for very much, Ms. Aings. I appreciate that. Next.
I wanted to call Kathy Rhodes. She don't know that I'm calling her, but she's really, I work full-time, and she's, she's making this program work when I'm not there, and I'm worried about some of those soldiers stealing hers, so I want to give her so much glory.
Good evening, y'all. Kathy Rhodes, 6388 Highway 219, Fortson. We had a great event of soldiers today. Came out, about 30 soldiers and veterans, and rode horses and had a team building event.
Can you folks hear in the back?
Hold on a minute.
Hold that mic a little bit for me.
Can you hear me now? Okay.
Turn on.
You know, it's very rewarding to give back to the people that have served our country and the families and let them get a sense of relief for coming to our home and riding the horses and enjoying it. We'd like to continue and expand on the property at 6350 with the staples and the horses and the trim.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Anyone, next person, anyone else who'd speak?
The whole Wagner family.
All right.
First Army Wagner is a basic, also training company. First Army and his wife is the founder, ran this group, leader.
My name's Ronald Wagner. I'm with 3903 Brookwood Drive in Phoenix City. I think the greatest part about Warrior Outreach out at the ranch is that it breaks the ice for soldiers and their, and their family members. We've done two trail rides out there, and the last one we did, Sam brought out some veterans from a local home. So there was, there was an elderly man there that was, he went into Normandy the day after D-Day, and he developed a relationship with one of my young sergeants, and they have spent time together. He's taken his family out there to have, have dinner with them. It just builds that kind of relationship, you know, so that soldiers from, from all eras can, can work together. And it's also created an opportunity for, once guys learn the program, I have a lot of soldiers that volunteer to help at the Dream Center or just when Sam needs help. It's just amazing. But that breaks the ice, that whole trail ride out there and building teamwork. We've, we've also done these spouses' trail riding.
Can you switch this?
I'm Christina Wagner. I also live at 3903 Brookwood Drive in Phoenix City. For me being a family readiness group leader and daughter of a veteran, married to a veteran, we spouses don't tend to understand PTSD. We, we hear the stereotypical type. We read the news that it says 23 soldiers a day that have retired commit suicide on a daily basis after they retire. We don't fully understand what our soldiers go through. The Warrior Outreach program and Kathy and Sam have been amazing because we have been able to take our spouses out there and understand a little bit more of what our soldiers do go through, how to understand the process, that sometimes they have a trigger moment, and it's not a bad trigger, it's just that they may be chaotic and bring back some of those old memories, and how our spouses are better to able to deal with those. So the, the greatest part about Warrior Outreach, it has opened up the door not only for our spouses and the soldiers, but for our children as well. We do take our kids out there. They do get to volunteer. They do shovel. So Sam and Kathy have just been great for, for the military community as well, so we just ask that this go through and be a wonderful blessing that it continues to be.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Thank you, y'all.
I would like to call a special invite to Jeff Bellinger to come forward. He is probably the most senior enlisted commanding sergeant who's ever served our army, 35 years, four-star level sergeant, hands pretty, 40 years, excuse me. He points that out pretty clearly. I could go on and on about this Sergeant Major, and he's pretty handy if you need a handyman. And that's why I came up here for him.
I'm Jeff Bellinger, 641 Holland Road in Catala, and I came here to support Sam. I wasn't planning on speaking, but I, I have frequently been out there, not with shovels but hammers and saws, to help him build some of the structure and guide volunteers and so forth. And I can, I can tell you from, from where I sit and watch the interaction between, you know, all of the people that work with this facility as well as hear the feedback from people who participated, anything from the 4H. I mean, there's a lot of people in this community that are involved with Warrior Outreach that aren't veterans. So I think, you know, if you, if you're looking for something good to do to help the whole community, we've already, we've already talked a great deal about that, but I just tell you, I, I see it, I watch it, I hear about it, and it's just a lot of really, really great work that's done. And it touches all aspects of the, of the community, from the kids to the families to the, to the warriors themselves, new soldiers, old soldiers, Marines, sailors, you know, it's, it's a pretty all-inclusive opportunity for people to get out and have a good time, learn a little bit about themselves, you know, had some country singers, songwriters come in. You may have heard about the programs where they take their experiences and turn it into a song. Some helps with their PTSD, some just makes them feel better about life, some of them get uplifted and reported, so it, it's a pretty, pretty wide activity that goes on out there. So I, I think for me, that's about, that's the best I can tell you, is, is I really support it. Sam's a longtime friend. He worked for me a number of years ago when he was at Fort Knox, and we, we served together in Iraq. We've seen some good times, we've seen some bad times, and what he's doing now is right up there to top those good times, so thanks.
Thank you, sir. Very much.
Charlie White from Club and Stream Center, just to kind of caveat what we're doing for the homeless and the needy and people. And his beautiful wife, Martha.
Got to watch that.
So we can steal a moment, or we can steal somebody else's.
Thanks for having me, guys. I'm Charlie White. I'm director of Club and Stream Center in Columbus. We're located in Bib City, which is one of the poorest parts of our city. But Sam helped, began, he and I met about a year ago, and he started supporting us and the people that we serve, food and groceries and, and meals and everything else too along the way. And he also, we enlist veterans. We ask the veterans that come or the witnesses of veterans, we give him the names, he gets them, and if they're in bad need, their homes, he goes to their homes, repairs their homes, puts them back in, in a good status. I, you probably saw an article recently, one that, 92, Sam, that we paint, he painted his house inside out. I mean, just, he does a great work, and I would highly recommend you do it because everything that this guy does, it is first class. He, he has, and with parking for his place and facility and whatever he does, he's going to do it right. So I would encourage that you vote for his, his champion.
Thank you, Mr. White. Appreciate it.
I brought the MP commander just in case somebody talked right, so go ahead, sir.
I prefer standing if you don't mind. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board, you know, I, I've known Sam and Kathy for quite some time, and I believe the only thing that they're guilty of is giving too much. They give so much to the community. I would not be here today if I didn't truly believe in, in what they believe in and their, and their idea of giving to our community as well as our veterans. We've done multiple things out of Warrior Outreach Ranch as well as improving the quality of life for veterans. We are nearly up to 13 homes this year, you know, improving whatever we can do, offer assistance. Sometimes I feel like I'm on the 209, on service, but that's okay. You know, it, it doesn't matter what you do, but you do something to give back. Recently, Ms. Faye, we, you know, she lost her husband five months ago, but recently we just went out there, cut her grass, painted her house, fixed her stairwell, and just that much, what we were out there doing for the six hours that we were out there contributing to her home, I've never seen her smile, and I've never seen her come up to somebody the way she did, and it was like, "You have beautiful teeth, Kathy. Can I have your teeth?" And I, I said, "Well, ma'am, if I could afford it, you can have it." But, you know, like I said, Sam and, Sam and Kathy are just wonderful people. They're trying to give back and how to improve our community outreach programs, and the only thing they're guilty of is giving too much.
Thank you. Just for the record, would you give your name and address?
I apologize. Captain Rwanda Valdez. I live on Fort Benning, Georgia.
Good. Anyone else wish to speak in favor of this application? Yes, sir.
I'm Bill Allison. I'm a public accountant in Columbus, Georgia. I live at number five, Treetop Court in Columbus. Warrior Outreach is one of my clients, and I know Sam from the Sergeant Major's Association, the AUSA chapter of the Sergeant Major's Association, Fort Benning, and two of my other nonprofit group clients. I've watched over the last couple of years, this organization grow like crazy. It's been very impressive. And one thing I noticed recently, when I was doing their Form 990 to be filed, was that the ratio of service expenses to revenues, in other words, how much is going to the cause of the organization versus administrative expenses, was more like in the range of 80 to 90 percent. And that was kind of interesting because, two things to compare it to, Will. Recently, I noticed on the national front, there was a, a pretty well-known charitable organization that had about 10 to 15 percent going to its supposed causes. And just the other day, excuse me, I had a, I had a call from some, some, I think it was a cancer-related organization I'd never heard of before, and they were, of course, you know, on the contributions, I questioned them, I pressed them to the point of saying, "How much of what is given per dollar goes to the cause that you're promoting?" And when I finally got an answer, it was 10 percent. So this organization is right on target exceptionally so, very admirable cause, and I totally support them.
Thank you, Mr. White. Appreciate that. Anyone else? All right. Now I hear from individuals who wish to speak in opposition to this application. Anyone in opposition? All right. Close the public comments. Sergeant Major, do you wish to make any closing remarks?
Notice, a lot of people here, I appreciate the community support and the people that showed up. You know, the dynamic thing about this is like Captain Bell, I said, you know, it's all about figuring out a way to do as much as you can within the 30-hour limit we're on, even though I'm over my six hours.
All right. Thank you, sir. Commissioners, do you have any questions at all?
I have comments.
Comments, be fun.
Yes. I know firsthand what Sam and Kathy Rhodes and their volunteers do at Warrior Outreach, and I am very proud to have them in District 3. And I say that I too have watched it over the last couple of years, the organization grow, and the things, this organization is phenomenal. And I would urge my fellow commissioners to please vote for the special use permit.
I think, thank you, Commissioner Langston. We owe you a great, a great debt of gratitude, and we appreciate what you do for us and for our soldiers. I have had the opportunity also visiting that, and it is a wonderful facility. I have had the opportunity also visiting that, and it is a wonderful facility. He's very, he and his wife both are very selfless individuals. If you need help, they're there for it, so I would just close with those comments. Any other comments?
I'm proud to be in Harris County, Charleston, Harris County.
We can move from District Three at the...
No.
Someone I know, the sheriff wanted, I could be a member.
I do have a question.
All right, sir.
This will only allow the use of a ag, ag horse facility, and will not, the special use does not extend to the other parts of the matrix, auditoriums, arenas, and auctions. Am I correct?
You're correct.
You asked me. Basically, this, what is on the application, which was the agricultural or the horse facility, and there's also a site plan that was submitted with the application that's got the barn and the trails.
We will close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm proud to make the motion to approve this special use permit for Warrior Outreach.
All right. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, please see if I can raise your hand. All right, motion carries. Thank you, sir. You have your rezoning. Good luck to you, and keep making this proud. Appreciate it very much. Okay, now we'll go back up on to new business, and thank all you folks that came to speak, by the way. We certainly appreciate that, and appreciate your support of Sergeant Major and Warrior Outreach. We'll go back up now to new business, and another public hearing, a little bit different kind of public hearing. This is on the budget, fiscal year budget proposed for, this is hearing number one for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen budget year. There will be another public hearing at our next meeting, June the sixteenth, and after that public hearing, we will take the vote on the budget. I will say at this point in time, it is a proposed budget. We have made, had to make a lot of cuts to this budget, budget request anyway, to come in with the budget and maintain our current existing millage rate on property tax, so there's no, no proposals at this point in time, no proposed increase in the millage. And we will now go in and discuss the budget, if anyone wishes to, any citizens wish to ask any questions or whatnot, they certainly have that right at this point in time. Do we have copies back on the back of the table, Greg?
Yes.
We do have some copies on the back table. Probably earlier tonight, at this hearing, we're going to be discussing general funds, solid waste, waterworks, airport, and small funds. So I would then open it to any, any questions or any comments from commissioners at this point in time, as to, I think we've made all the changes that we had talked about in this budget proposal, and so do you want to ask any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question. Department Eight, BMS, line on the telephone, and the department head proposed a seventy-two-hundred budget, dollar budget, and we, the amount listed here is that our budget is eighty-two-hundred, so I wondered what the difference, thousand-dollar difference is in that.
Any questions? I may have an extra thousand dollars.
That's four oh five eight oh eight seven three three.
Come on. I've got it.
Okay. Hard to know, it should still read seventy-two-hundred, correct?
Yeah, I'll check on that.
All right.
I'll come back through my email.
All right.
Just for a reason, I might just hit wrong key.
Any other comments about commissioners at all?
Yes. Under Community Center.
Is it four hundred?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
It looks to me like there's about eleven thousand dollars increase in it, but the total expenses on the bottom line, it shows to be about twenty-four thousand to twenty-three thousand. I just couldn't, I'm missing something somewhere. What I see it on is an increase in building maintenance, an increase in the electricity, an increase of pool supplies, which is only a thousand dollars. But other than that, it looks pretty much straight across. I just wondered what the change was.
Hang on. Some reason I...
You must have...
No, I'm looking at it, and it's not as part of it, it didn't get...
It was also, so long, on that same department, there was also two pages in here for community development?
Yeah. We've got two also, there's a difference.
But Jim, what did you say on pool supplies?
Okay. Pool supplies, it shows two thousand, in two thousand fifteen, twenty-one hundred, now it's twenty-two thousand. Yeah, I should have said twenty-one thousand to twenty-two. Electricity from ninety-one thousand to ninety-five, and building maintenance from fifty-five hundred to ten thousand. There's also another plus for shit.
That's, that's just included in that?
Yeah. But that doesn't add up to, you know, twenty thousand plus.
You're right. Well, for some reason, another, something didn't get printed here.
I think the numbers were the same as on the previous year we had.
Well, you've got, you've got something at the bottom, you've got gas and irrigation.
Gas and irrigation.
Add in fifteen hundred, and order sewer at twelve, twelve and a half.
That's where your big...
So that's, that's where it is, but you're, yeah.
But the total that we had previously, three hundred thousand, seven oh seven, is still pretty prime.
Right. Yeah, I just, I don't, somehow missed. Okay, I got two in here.
All right.
One, I think.
Yeah, pull that one in, get pulled out. That's what happened.
Any comments, questions from citizens? All right. Hearing done, and we'll close this public hearing, and we will discuss it again at the June sixteenth meeting, make any final changes if any, and then vote at that particular point in time. All right. Next on the agenda is, do you have anything else, Greg? Yours?
We have this front door initiative that I just got from the Regional Planning Council today, and I don't know if it needs commission approval or not. It's to try and better market the community through rural development, improve community branding, use developing, existing moving production, so try and get some movie production in here and improving the digital front door. I don't see a downside to it, but I'm not sure if...
As I recall, this requires no expenditure from the county, it's, and River Valley Regional Commission is kind of spearheading this, trying to help, it's really kind of a marketing kind of thing.
Correct.
Put us out there and also to try and attract maybe some...
Film industry things.
Film industry type things and that type of thing, so.
I guess probably just consensus by the commission that it's okay to let the chairman sign it.
I, I would, yeah, I'd like consensus out of the group, or if you want, it's, we just got it today.
I'm not sure how soon they need it back.
Could you place a copy on our box?
Why don't we do that? Put a copy there, everybody getting an opportunity to read that.
We can just forward you the whole, I'll just forward you the whole...
Why don't you do that? Forward that to everybody.
And it's got some explanation with it, too.
Okay.
Do that, and then we'll just, we'll vote on it next time.
I do have, I need for executive session for land acquisition and personnel.
So you're going to email that to commissioners?
Yes, sir.
And then we will bring it up, put it on the agenda for next meeting. Anything else, Greg?
No, sir.
Taylor, do you have anything, sir?
No, sir.
All right. Then I'll make, make provision that we go into executive session for purposes of personnel and land acquisition. Do you have a second?
Second.
A second. The discussion, all in favor, see if I can raise my hand. All right. Thank you, folks.